All right, it is 2:30 and this is August 1st. It's time for, we're going to have a study session at this time on the City of Salina Zero Waste Initiative and Waste Sort Project. And with that, I think I can turn it over to Mr. Koach, Jim Koach.
Sure, I don't have a whole lot to add and I don't know about Jim Toich either. Ultimately, it's to Jim Koach.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Jim Toich, Director of Public Works. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Koach here in just a few minutes. We're here to talk today about the Zero Waste Initiative and the Waste Sort Project. Two things come to mind. The first is a while back, Mayor Davis encouraged us in our last study session regarding solid waste to look for, to be innovative, kind of lean forward in the saddle and lead the, find ways to lead the way in Kansas. And I think you're going to see a lot in this presentation that helps reinforce that idea, that comment. We certainly took it to heart and we intend to continue down that path. Former Commissioner Peck said, "Let's never do a study that we just set on the shelf." This is back when we first asked for the Waste Characterization Study. We took that to heart and we don't intend for this to be on the shelf. I think you'll see in this presentation that the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, the Saline County Solid Waste Management Committee, Mr. Koach's staff at General Services, and all of us are committed and very interested in partnering with a new group that we're going to talk about here in a little bit, a citizen stakeholder group to help with the Zero Waste Initiative. And with that, I guess the only other thing, I've heard a lot of talk from various people. I had someone come to my office today and say that this weekend they had been talking about the Zero Waste Initiative. And one of the, so I asked him, I said, "So what did you all talk about? Or what did you think? Or what did you, you know, what did you come up with?" And they said, "Well, it's a grand goal. It sounds good. We don't understand how you could ever possibly achieve that." And I said, "Well, when I first heard the words, I thought what you thought." And I think with the, with the help of the City Commission and adopting a definition for what we mean by this, and then partnering with the right people at KDHE and elsewhere, we're starting to make sense of what this really means. And what I would encourage everyone, anyone listening or anyone who watches this later, to think about is it's really more about eliminating wasteful practices. And that's something that the City of Salina is very familiar with, with its continuous process improvement history and ongoing efforts. So I think if you think about it in those terms, it makes a lot more sense and it might be a little bit easier to digest. So with that, I'd like to invite Mr. Koach to go ahead.
And while Jim's to the mic, just let me mention that although we don't take roll call for our study sessions, the mayor is online up there and I want to make sure that we can hear him and he can hear us. Mayor Davis, are you on with us?
I can hear you well. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You bet. Mayor Commissioners, I'm Jim Koach. I'm the Operations Manager for Public Works. Appreciate, Dr. Phil Black is also here. He's the Chairman of our Solid Waste Management Committee, serving as the keepers of the Solid Waste Management Plan for Saline County, and then also helping to initiate the Zero Waste Initiative, the stakeholder group. And the talk today is going to not only be about our public efforts to understand our waste stream and ways that we can reduce it, but also the partnership that we hope grows out of this, working with the private sector. So I'm happy to be here. We did, in the spring of 2021, had a studies, had a work session with KDHE that I'll get into in just a minute. But if you want to, this Zero Waste Initiative and the Solid Waste Study and Recyclables Composition Study. So there's kind of three different things that we're going to talk about today. Salina is the responsible party in charge of the Solid Waste Management Plan for Saline County. I mean, that's through an interlocal agreement clear back from 1984, I believe. And it just made sense, I believe, the forefathers and mothers, because Salina owns and operates the landfill and then also provides residential services to the largest community here in Saline County. Next. We do have a Solid Waste Management Committee. Challenges the last couple of years, meeting in person as well as Zoom meetings. You can see us trying to socially distance and hold meetings. The main purpose of the Solid Waste Management Committee is to review and approve the Solid Waste Management Plan. But they're also charged with establishing a schedule for reduction of waste volumes, source reduction, reuse, recycling, recompasting. So there's kind of a, two main goals for that committee. The committee is made up of city residents, small city residents in the county, and then county, large members. The committee's supposed to have 13 members and we recently lost just a couple more, so we're down to five. We have five members on our committee. It's supposed to be 13. So that has been a goal for the last several years to try to increase enthusiasm, interest, and fill our, fill our committee with members so that we represent the whole community. Next, please. We've done a lot as far as just the city and the county with our current diversion efforts for solid waste. We did start up the Salina Drive-Thru Recycling Center back in 2018. And we have a household hazardous waste center. It helps keep paints and liquids and chemicals out of our water supply. We collect sharps at several of our public buildings and make sure that they're disposed of properly. And that's your needles, medical, medical supplies, those kinds of things. We don't do residential yard waste collection anymore, but we still have a substantial yard waste section out at the landfill keeping, it diverts it from going into the landfill. People are able to reuse it and what's not used is burned. The city's authorized an environmental education and enforcement coordinator in the last year. And we had a really good one. Unfortunately, she left this summer and we're still in the process of replacing her. But substantial efforts on educating the community, not only with the rollout of our new sanitation system, but our recycling efforts. With that, we've increased our Facebook and website information. She did a number of presentations throughout the last year and we were really excited in the progress we were making. And we hope to get it filled real soon. As part of our normal solid waste management, we came up with the idea of repeating a waste sort that was done a couple of different times back in 1997 and then again in 2004, to understand what our waste stream is and look for opportunities to maybe divert that. And as part of that, something new that we didn't have in 2004 is a recycling center. So not only did we contract for a solid waste sort, but then also we sorted our recyclables just to see what kind of stuff we're taking in and what the percentages of each one, each ones of those in the composition were. And then the definitions are there. Just, it's a very detailed physical sort of materials and it's random samples. And we make sure and get private carriers and city carriers and commercial debris. And it's statistically, trying to make it statistically valid as far as a representative sample. But you're reminded, it's one day, one point in time that it may or may not be, you can't take it to three decimal places and assume that that's what we have in our landfill. Because every day is just a little different out there. But last spring, we had a work session with Solid Waste Management Committee. And Dr. Black invited Julie Coleman, which was the head of KDHE, just to come out and see what Salina was doing. And we explained what we wanted to do with the solid waste sort and the compositions recyclable study. And she was so excited about the city collecting data and actually using it to plan their future, that they encouraged us to apply for a grant so that they could piggyback on this and use it as a kind of a demo project for how to do things right. So we did apply for a grant last summer and they did come through with a $48,000 grant for Salina, which pays for about 60% of everything that we did. So we're really, we need to acknowledge their participation in the study, but it's something that we were going to do anyway. It just helped us reduce our cost and it'll be something that'll be used as a model, hopefully, throughout the state. So next. And next, that's what I just talked about with Julie. And then just acknowledging KDHE. And then the data that we collected, we have plans for it and I'll go into it later. But the grant was approved in August. We actually did the waste sort last October, collected all the data, went through all of the rigors of waste sorting trash, literally waste deep. But as they got to reducing the data, we came up with some anomalies that because we were using large containers, like a 20-gallon container, and sometimes it would only have two or three bottles in it, that the tear weights and the accuracy of the scales, that there was something that wasn't quite working out, that we had some negative numbers for real small. And we got together with our consultant and they decided it just wasn't acceptable. So they came back, SCS came back and redid the waste sort this March at their expense. And we were very detailed oriented and we changed some of the things. Those small waste samples were weighed separately, the tear weights on every round were documented. We did the waste sort and the recyclable sort kind of at the same time because we were trying to get it done quickly. We did one and then the other. So it was much more uniform and not so much, I don't know, not so much chaos in the building because it was a limited space we were working in. And we came out with results that we're really, really pleased with. So SCS has been a good partner. They're our landfill consultant. We just signed a new three-year contract with them and they completed this sort. We hope to have the final report by the end of the month, which was required in the contract. But we are, had made a presentation on some preliminary results at a Sawana Conference, Solid Waste Conference earlier this spring and plan to do another one for the county fair. And before we get too far with this, we want to make sure that you folks had it in front of you in case you had any questions. So, but it's a data-driven, next please. It's just identifying exactly what's in our waste stream and what's in our recycling stream and looking for opportunities to increase that, diversion, reuse, those kinds of things. Educating the public. Recycling is not free, but it's one of those things you get what you pay for. You know, is what's, what are our values and what do we want Salina to represent in the future? Reaching out to the public. But we came up with the plan. We designed a process that's very detail-oriented. Trained people, collected the data. They're in the process of analyzing the data and getting the results. But we're going to give you the draft results today, that there may be some slight percentage changes. But with the way this is, not to do two decimal points, that this is going to be, give you a really good idea of how things have changed since 2004 with our waste stream. Next, please. Now, here's some action slides of the group. It's just a big shed out at the landfill. And you remember, we're doing this during COVID. We had to make sure that we protected all of our staff and employees and volunteers. There are a lot of those white jumpsuits or just paper disposable because they would get pretty messy throughout the day. October was a little chilly and it was a little chilly in March. So it helped, it helped keep the flies down, I'll put it that way. Next, please. But there's a lot of planning and detail that went into this as far as how many samples, where you collected the samples, how many were from the city trucks, how many were from private hauler trucks, what supplies you needed to have on hand. Since it's out in the country, how do you wash your hands and get cleaned up to have lunch? Just all kinds of, what kind of protective equipment do you need? That you can use your fingers, but the sharp materials can't go through the gloves? All of those things just to protect our people, but there's a lot of details.
That was a question I had. Did they use puncture-resistant gloves?
Yeah, it was a heavy neoprene or nitrile gloves that they used.
Yes, they were puncture-resistant. I think the, for, for those of us who are sort of waste geeks that are interested in knowing how this is working, this is, this is really where it begins to matter with the, with the state and how we develop the future of waste management in the state of Kansas. Having a systematic methodology for not only the, you know, the end result, the waste that you have, but how did, how did you get to that point? There really isn't any training guidance in the industry on how to do this. And being able to do it right and capture the right data and because ultimately, our goal is to then use this data to make good decisions or to present recommendations or ideas to you for you all to make good decisions. And how we do this really matters. And the state participated in the, in the setup of the methodology as well as participating in the actual event. Our goal is to document what we did and what the results were for our internal use. But it's really important to, as, for an industry, to say, "What's the right way to do this?" And the first time that we tried it, Jim mentioned, in October, we didn't like the tear weights and we said, "We have to stop and we have to do this again." And it, you know, it's unfortunate that it happened, but it's commendable that the engineers recognized it and then took steps to prevent it. And we actually see that as a huge learning advantage for everybody in the state. Julie and her staff were extremely helpful and they are very excited about where we are going with this data. And I can't stress enough that the detail behind this is going to make a difference in how people do waste characterization studies in the future in the state of Kansas. And I think that's a valuable contribution to the industry.
Thank you, Jim. And there's just, like Jim said, there's just a lot of moving parts here. But our recycling staff, our sanitation staff, the scale house operators, the communication from the sorting room up to the site. We had not only physical sorts, but we'll get into a demolition, construction and demolition sort, which is an estimation of a pile. And then they converted the, the volumes into weights for a theoretical tonnage. So it's, it's very analytical, the approach that we took. Next, please. Yeah, we just, we collected the waste at the landfill. We collected the recyclables at our recycling center. And it was the first 75 customers for three days. And we went ahead and put it in one of our packer trucks, but it was not compressed. It was supposed to be just a representative sample of the materials. We didn't want to compress it because it, those bottles and stuff, when you mash them together, it's really hard to get them apart and there's stuff in between them. And we wanted to be able to sort efficiently. So there was even a process of how we delivered the materials. But we did residential, industrial, commercial, institutional, construction and demolition. And then we had representative samples from not only Salina Sanitation Service, but the ones here in town. Next, please. And here's just a kind of a flow chart of the sorting process where we just, you set it up. You gather all your materials, you deliver the materials, you create samples from those materials, you weigh the samples, you document all of the sampling, do a physical sort. And then when you get down to just all of the mush, then there was be a physical or a visual sort of what's categorized as and we would weigh it separately. But then the weighing, and then once the samples were, we were all done with the samples, we either put them in a roll-off container or another sanitation truck to take back up to the landfill. And then the next several slides are just blowups of some of these steps. But there were a number of bins. I think we collected 29 different categories in the waste sort and almost as many in the recycling sort. Next, please. Safety, we had a safety meeting every day, talking about the personal protective equipment that was required, what you were, where you were, what you had to do to leave the building, come back in, get clean, be safe. The required equipment as far as the proper face mask, the proper gloves and all of those things. We had volunteers that, we tried to recruit this as a community effort. We had some volunteers that would be there the first day, but not the second day or third day. So we had to train people every day. And then we also, because our, we're limited in staff, had some temporary help through one of the employment agencies here in town that furnished us with some really good people and we appreciate it. But they weren't the same every day, so we'd have to go through training. But the sorting, you would, there's a limited space on a table, but one person would be designated the milk jug and milk bottle person, another one's the aluminum can person. And you got, it was like organized chaos that because it was easier for you to grab what you needed and put it in the bin, there was less likely of a chance of putting it in the wrong container and there was less movement. So the table would be, when you first dumped it on there, people were pushing stuff to the corner that that belonged in and you sorted and it, they got really fast at it by the time they were done. So it was, it was, it was very interesting to watch. The next slide we've got up here is just the recycling center on Santa Fe and North Street. We collected those samples and then took it all out there in a single, or actually it was one and a half trucks to get the three, three-day samples. That was a lot of material. The first time we did that, we were doing recycling and waste sorting at the same time with two different teams. And that was, but we were using the same scales and that was a point of contention. So we made sure and eliminated that the second time around. Next slide. We had, the consultant had people at the scale house, had someone up on the, on the landfill itself. We were trying to get a representative sample of all the different haulers. So selecting the trucks, different trucks to sample was part of the process. Next. But they would bring it down in a one-ton truck. We would sort it into tubs. They would randomize the tubs and decide which ones would be sampled. Tried to make them representative of what was the material in the truck. And a lot of times, we had more material on the truck than we actually needed for the number of samples. So they just returned that to the landfill. Next. Then they, like I said, they dump it on the table, tear the bags open and we would start sorting. You can tell by that photo, it's not very desirable, the material that they were dealing with. We would sort, sort.
I think one, one thing I would like to add is on that slide 20 is we have to be careful when we try to extrapolate this data also because although the, a category of waste, a tonnage, a percentage of waste, however you, you look at it, not all of that material is going to be able to be recyclable. If you look at that picture, obviously, that, those items are highly contaminated and would not constitute a recyclable material. So what we have to do is target those wastes that we believe that we can extract additional waste out of that could, that could be sent to a recycling center and that we do have value in it. This kind of goes back to that initial statement about what we mean when we say zero waste. It is not trying to eliminate all waste. It's trying to identify those wastes that we could, one of two ways. Either we isolate before it gets to the landfill, so it doesn't become in this condition, or it's something that we can pull out of the waste stream and then recycle that way. So that's, that's kind of what we're balancing here. There's a lot of this material that while, while we would like to be able to do something with it, it's not in a state that we could do something with it.
Okay, and the next several slides are just kind of the process that we've been describing and we'll go through these rather quickly so that we can get to the results, which is the good stuff. And we also want to talk about the Zero Waste Initiative. This is just preparing for the weigh-ins and the bins. Next. There's a sample of the floor scales that we were weighing and, and collecting the data. After we were done, we, we tried the first waste sort, we put it in a roll-off container. And this may surprise you, but the wind does blow out there. And after, they had to pick that up about three times. We started putting it back in a truck. So it was, it was a learning process, just little things like that, the first time around you don't think about. So then we would clean up the work area and we'd start over again. Next. After we collected all the data, doing the field work, doing a statistical analysis, looking at all of it, trying to come up with numbers for the different categories. And then just a reminder that, you know, these are still kind of relative magnitudes. These aren't exact numbers. This was one day on a, on a point in time that is, hopefully represents kind of what the community does. So, next, please. The recyclables categories. Paper, plastic, metals, and other non-combustibles were how we sorted those types of things. Other non-combustibles basically is glass and other inorganics. And then we've also got a list of contamination on the right here. And as you know, our process for collecting and, and monitoring our recycling material is, is, has reduced the number, the number or amount of contaminants in our, in our recycling products. What we actually found is on the next slide. For in our recyclables, 65% was paper, which is mixed paper and cardboard, 10% plastics, and this is by weight, 4% metals, and the 20% other non-combustibles, which is, which is generally glass. The contamination was 1.3% in the materials sampled from our recycling center. And the national average for contamination is 17% and much worse in a lot of places. So that's something that's really well done as far as the way we do it.
And this is all recyclables, residential, commercial, all of that?
This is the recyclables that we get at our recycling center, the stuff that we sorted.
And yes, that does include businesses as well. For us, for us, it's, it's very telling when you see the amount of paper and the amount of non-combustibles that we collect. That's the overwhelming majority of the recyclables that we have.
Yeah, plastics is 10% by weight, but I think most of us know it's a lot more than that by volume just because all the bottles take up so much room, until they're shredded or compacted.
So is Christmas wrapping paper recyclable or is that something contaminated? So in January, you'd have a whole different looking picture of, of this sort, probably.
As long as it's not the tin-foily type paper, if it's paper, real paper, I think it's something that they would accept. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, next slide. Now, the waste categories for the residential, industrial, commercial, and institutional, a lot of the same categories, but different products involved here. Paper, plastics, metals, other non-combustibles, which is generally glass. And then a whole lot of miscellaneous categories there that we also sorted out. lot of miscellaneous categories there that we also sorted out. Next slide. Again, this is the draft results, and I've seen the, what we think is the final results are still, we still don't have that in hand, but the big thing here is 34, 34% non, other combustibles, 34% other combustibles, and a lot of that is food and like diapers and those kinds of things that generally aren't, aren't readily recyclable. 20% paper, 16% plastic, 8% yard waste, 5% metals, 7% other non-combustibles, and about 8% miscellaneous. Next slide, yeah, this one here. This is residential, and then the industrial, commercial, institutional broke out separately, and you'll notice some, some differences, like in the industrial waste, there is actually more paper and more plastic. But what I did here is I compared it to what we did in 2004, and what you'll see in the final report when we get it, is paper used to be about 30% of the waste stream, and it's now 20 to 25% total waste stream. Plastics was only 10%, and that's up to 15 to 20% now. Yard waste, when we used to collect it residentially, was 15 to 20% of our volume, and it's now down to 8%. Other combustibles used to be 20, the food and diapers and miscellaneous, now that's up to 35%. Metals was 5% in 2004, and it's still 5%, and other non-combustibles, which is your glass, it was 7%, and it's still 7%.
So the timing probably makes a significant difference on yard waste, given the seasonality of that, correct?
Yes. Yep, October and March are not our big yard, yard waste month as far as?
I was, I was just going to mention that, that probably not the best timing to get the most accurate picture of what it's like in the summertime, but it probably would still toward, tend to be trending downward. There's a couple of numbers that are very interesting to us. One is, because we're talking about industrial and commercial paper, and that's a significant amount of paper, 25% paper. To me, this would be a one that we would want to target and say to the, to the stakeholder group, which is largely made up of businesses and colleges and nonprofits, and the people that, that make up this number, and say, you know, and ask them, what kind of interventions can we do at your place of business that would help you divert this paper from our waste stream? And I, I don't know what those answers are, where this is all very preliminary data, but the, the idea of doing this is, Mayor Davis, this is, it's truly groundbreaking for the state of Kansas. People have not done this in the past, and the fact that, that we have the ability with Dr. Black, who also helps with the Solid Waste Management Committee, to help us begin to get our hands around this and try to identify the sources of these parts of our waste stream, the, the opportunity is tremendous. I don't, I don't think it's ever been presented before, and I, I think we can see some really good numbers out of this. It's interesting that while recycling is going up in Saline County, so is the amount of plastic. If, if you listen to what Jim said, compared to the last two, the amount of plastic in our waste stream is higher than it's ever been, and I think it's, you know, not, not because we're not trying to recycle plastic, but that, just that the amount of plastic that is now in our everyday lives is just so much greater. Again, something that we're going to have to try to get our hands around and, and try to figure out. But this is, this is the, the stuff that matters. If we're going to make a difference, if we're truly going to change the way our waste stream looks in the future, we could not get there without this study. And then to take the data and try to do interventions with individual businesses, business owners, nonprofits, or whoever that may be, is, you know, we are really, really optimistic that we can make some inroads in, in our waste stream.
Okay, next slide, please. As you know, we've got some major expansions going on here in the community, and then also several subdivisions going on. And the construction and demolition content that goes out to the landfill is, is very important to us, and because it's so large and bulky, it's taking samples, representative samples. We would get an area and the, and a person, experienced person would walk around it, and they would estimate how much wood was in it, how much carpet was in it, how much drywall was in it, how much concrete block was in it, out of a representative sample, and we did this several times. So we had a, a visual sorting process, and then like I said, they converted that volume into a weight through some, some accepted industry standards, so we tried to figure out the tonnage of materials based on this that's going into our landfill annually. There were 24 sample loads, and they estimated the percentages, and then we, we processed that data, and that data is very interesting, and I think all, the next slide shows all of the categories that that was sorted into, and we had some of it represented, represented there as far as the original waste sort, but a lot of it was, had to be, because it's so large and bulky, estimated visually. Next slide. There were some, some peaks here that we thought were extremely interesting as far as items that you may or may not be able to either divert, reuse, or repurpose. And just a couple of examples here are the roofing materials, the untreated lumber, wood pallets, or gypsum board. And there's a, Jim talked about opportunities, there's a lot of pallets that go out to the landfill. There's a lot of companies in town that we talked to, that they reuse their pallets, and they have a process, and the ones that they don't reuse, they recycle, but not every business does that. And that's the, I think, some of what Dr. Black's talking about, getting the businesses to buy into those best practices so that more of it gets reused or repurposed or recycled, rather than just the disposed of at the landfill. So that commercial, with all the growth that's going on right now, the commercial and construction demolition is an area that we want to do some more investigation on. And some, a good example of a, of a business that has really committed to, to doing something different is the Dillons. They have a corporate office is in Hutch, they're a Kansas-based company, but they've got a company-wide food recycling effort now where they collect all of their food waste from their delis and from their, all of their processing and their meat markets and everything, and they collect it, they centralize it, and they're composting it, taking it to a central location and composting it. That's a, that's a kind of a best practice that hopefully other grocery stores or even restaurants can pick up on.
Is that a private facility?
I'm not sure who they are actually taking it to.
They're taking it from Murray Compost.
Yeah, our, our E3 coordinator that we lost had all of the, the details about that investigation, a lot of historical knowledge went with her, but we do have the contact person, and she was very open to sharing information with us. We also did detailed interviews with a local restaurant, a recognizable name here in Martinelli's as far as the difficulties, trying to either recycle food waste or like beverage containers, glass bottles, you know, if we could get, if there was a way to drop off glass bottles or collect glass bottles from the bars and restaurants downtown and never take them to the recycling center, it just skips two or three steps and it's cleaner waste, you know, if there was something that, that could be done. So those are areas that we're hoping, we're learning from the businesses. But Martinelli's, just because of their growth and they have limited space, you know, that's, that's their biggest challenge right now, is they don't have space to set stuff aside. And they don't have, they can't leave old food around very long and still make the health department happy, so those are challenges that hopefully we can come up with maybe some solutions. So that's kind of the, the waste sort, a lot of, lot of involvement. We had volunteers, we had KDHE, we had city staff. Next slide. Just the landfill department, sanitation department, volunteers, our, our own consulting firm. Next slide. And then, of course, the financial support from KDHE, and they did come out both times we sorted and, and actually helped with the process, that they've used it as a learning tool for some of their new employees. As part of the presentation, we also wanted to talk about zero waste. We call it the Zero Waste Initiative, but it, it was part of the Solid Waste Management Plan last year that, that you folks approved, defining what zero waste means to Salina, has a philosophy that not only promotes reuse, recycling, and conservation programs, but also, more importantly, emphasizes sustainability by considering the entire lifecycle of products, processes, and systems. So that, when we say zero waste, that's kind of our baseline. And as part of that Solid Waste Management Committee, you also encouraged us to, to coordinate or work with a private sector stakeholder group, and Dr. Black has gotten that kicked off, and we had our first meeting June 15th. And I'm sure he'll maybe come up and, and give you some more information on the process that he's going through trying to involve the community. But we want to work closely with him, it's a private group, but we want to work closely with him and learn what he's learning, and, and also be hand in glove as far as we're, we're working together for the same goals. And I appreciate Phil's involvement and encouragement. He did a great job at the first meeting, moderating and facilitating the conversation. He had a, a lot of the community, I want to call them movers and shakers, but they were the leaders, citizens, business owners, school districts, administrators, developers, the other waste handlers, had a lot of folks there, and a lot of folks that had made a commitment that just couldn't be there that day, so he's got a really good group of people that, if they can't get it done in Salina, I don't know who can. I did, next slide. Take an excerpt from Phil's notes here as far as just our first meeting, kind of the goals of the community, a common agenda, shared measurement systems, mutually reinforcing activities, and then just continuous communication. And he's got a commitment from Kansas Westland to, to help support the group and give, give them a place to meet in the future, so we've got a, I think, a really strong base with, with what he's established. Like I said, that first meeting was, that first meeting was just June 15th, so relatively The, the next slide here, defining partnerships. We talked, we've talked, Jim and I have talked quite a bit, and the internal staff's talked about, quite a bit about just our diversion activities, what the city can do, but then also the Zero Waste Initiative, looking at the draft results, what are things that, that industry or business can probably do a better job of handling before it ever gets in the waste stream? Like pallets or gypsum board, which is drywall, plastic bags, plastics three through seven, metals, glass, food, cardboard, you know, just clean water, the things that affect, are going into, into the waste stream, so. Is there anything else you want to add there, Jim, as far as just the partnerships?
Yeah, I think this, this was brought up when we, when we first presented the next three-year contract for our landfill engineering consultant, and we had the waste characterization and recyclables composition study, and, and there was a lot of talk in our meeting about, about, about this, and we're sharing the, the beginning results of that with you now. The, the other thing that shows up in that three-year plan is something that we called the Waste Reduction Strategies. So now that we have the dad, data, one of the things that we need to do is figure out what, what is in the waste, where is this waste coming from, and what kind of intervention might take place in order to reduce that particular waste stream, if, if there is an intervention that we can figure out. So as, as we were going through this, one of the things that, that, that city staff is, the way that we are thinking about this is, what is it that in our operations we can bolster? Something that we can change in, in acceptance practice, or maybe there's something that we can isolate when the waste first comes to the landfill? And anything that might affect our, our operational procedures. We want to go through each one of these wastes and try to identify where is it coming in, how is it coming in, who's the first to touch it? Is it something that we can isolate and do something with? What is that process? Once we get it isolated, what are we going to do with it? So if, if you look on our side where it says city staff diversion activities, and you start looking at the numbers, I think, and, and this will be obviously a topic of, of more consideration on your part, but one of the things that, that we thought initially was probably going to happen, just by knowing what's in our waste, and then what this waste characterization study said, is that there is a, probably a, a good opportunity to do composting, that, that other combustible category, yeah, other combustible category, that 34%, there's a, I believe it was 14 or 15% we'll get in the final report that was made up of food. There's not a lot you can do with food, but you can certainly compost it. So perhaps there's an opportunity, depending on what that food is, and, and how we might be able to incorporate it, but it's certainly something that we want to think about from an operational perspective, is there a way to isolate this food, capture it, maybe turn it into a part of a composting process at the landfill? So that's sort of where we're thinking of. In terms of the Zero Waste Initiative, obviously, the, this, all of the stakeholders are waiting for this data also. As soon as we get the final report, we will share that with them. We're, we're planning a meeting very soon with our engineering consultant, Mr. Koach and I, and, and his staff, to meet with Dr. Black and, and talk about the data and, and how we can work together, but one of the things that we're getting ready to also set up is some public engagement, so that we can talk about waste reduction strategies with, with the citizen and say, what kind of ideas do you have? And here's the results of our study, what, you know, what, what does that make you think of, or what could we be doing differently? And, and just really try to engage with the public and, and see where they are at and what they are thinking, and how we might be able to incorporate that into either our operations or some, some future endeavor. A number of the, the items listed on the side, they're, they're, you know, like cardboard is listed on both sides, because it's complicated and there's probably multiple things that we're going to have to do. It's very possible that we could come back at some point in the future and say, you know, if we had the right containers at the right locations for these businesses, they could just be dropping this in there, it would never make it to the landfill, we could, you know, get it picked up and, and diverted. Some of that is going to end up at the landfill anyway, so is there an operation that we need to do? A lot of this is going to be, it's, it's not just one or the other, it's going to be multiple things that we're going to have to do in order to, you know, properly dispose or divert this, this waste. And I think there's a lot of opportunity, it's, the information's starting to come together now, and I think going forward, we'll have an opportunity to further define what these partnership roles look like.
Next slide, please. Like Jim said, it's kind of what's next or what's on the, what's on the horizon. We've got data, now we need to analyze that data, data and come up with some, some tangible goals. We are under contract with SCS to do a waste reduction strategies, and they have a very well-respected expert, Karen Lukin, with the Environmental, Economic Environmental Solutions International, that is, has done a lot of this kind of stuff around the country, that we're hoping to learn, not only looking at our waste, what can be done, but also with her background, talk about best practices as far as communities and the goals that we're looking at. We are planning on doing a composting feasibility study with our consultant next, a high-level feasibility study during the next calendar year. We do hope to, to continue our relationship with Dr. Black and the Zero Waste Committee as far as working together. far as working together toward common goals. Now, of course, anything that impacts the city, it'll have to come back to you folks for any city-led initiatives that we would keep you informed of. We are in the process of completing the five-year review of our Solid Waste Management Plan. Our committee meets at the end of this month, and we'll hopefully be bringing you a plan for acceptance sometime in September, early October. But the Waste Reduction Strategies is something that we're really excited about. Jim called us waste geeks, but we like the data and we hope that we can do something with it. Did you want to add anything on this one, Jim?
I mean, it's a horrible graphic. I apologize that that's all I could come up with at the time. What I was really thinking of is I used to do something called gap analysis, and for, it was for a theater of operation. And one of the things that we learned is, from an institutional perspective, we typically looked at this particular operation, in this case, it was IEDs, but we looked at it very linear, linearly, if that's a word. We looked at it in a very linear fashion, and we realized that what was happening in theater was actually very nodal, that it wasn't just one thing coming together to cause this thing to happen, but it was a multitude of things. And the more that I'm, the more that I look at this data and the more that we start piecing it apart and looking for solutions, the more I think that the solution, and it's probably why it's so hard, not just for us, but for everyone who tries to do something like this, is that it affects so many different people in so many different ways. It, you know, there's a person at home that probably wants to recycle, but they get a lot of stuff from Amazon and they have no place to put it, and they just need to get rid of it as quickly as possible. And that's a real concern, it's a real problem, and it's part of our waste stream. There's the business that, as Jim mentioned, that gets lots of shipments several times a week, and he just doesn't have the space to put that material, that he needs somewhere to take it right away. That's part of the problem. There's a lot of waste that comes out to the, or that goes to the recycling center, and there's a lot of waste that's still getting in to our landfill that we have to figure out, is there any part of this that we can take apart and divert? I think the, so Jim and I played with this slide for a few minutes, and we didn't have a lot of time because, to be honest, it was, we were closing in on the deadline. And I really wanted something that more represented, like, almost like gears interconnecting with each other, because we really do think that it's going to take multiple people at multiple different levels to come back to you with a solution that's going to work. But we have a lot of people who are interested and willing to help and excited about it, and so I think we have an opportunity to do something that's pretty amazing.
Next slide, please. And then, just a reminder that as far as the public sector, there's limitations to what we can accomplish, what kind of rules we can institute, or what we can do to recover stuff. But the private sector really currently is doing the bulk of what we consider recycling in the community. We've got a couple major metal reclaimers here in town. We've got some other companies, the Walmarts and the Lowes and the Targets that are doing a lot of internal recycling, that they shared data with us. And from that, we made projections on the community. But with all of our best efforts, we reclaim or recycle about 7,000 tons a year, and the public sector is 50,000 tons a year. But as a community, compared to the 87,000 tons that are going into the landfill, we're recycling 50,000 to 60,000 tons a year in Salina. So we're, right now, we're at a 43% recycling rate, which is, I think, probably one of the biggest ones reported in the state.
It is. And it's, that's something else that's good about this data and where I think that there's a good partnership for city staff and the Zero Waste Initiative is, if we can encourage more businesses to entrust us with their data, knowing that that's safe and that we're only using it for reporting purposes, and we're not going to put a percentage next to a company name or anything like that, but the more accurate picture that we can create of the actual total amount of waste that exists in Saline County, we think we can get a lot of people, you know, it's probably a lot better for a couple of businessmen to talk to another businessman about sharing that data than it is for Jim or Jim to try to go get that data. And maybe through that way, we can have a better picture of what's actually taking place in Saline County. And then, as a result of that, we may also learn, in this last five-year review that Mr. Koach and his staff have been doing, there's been some new participation that we haven't had from the business community before. And I think part of it has to do with, you know, kind of behind the scenes and businesses talking to each other and helping us get that data. So it's pretty exciting.
All right. Well, that concludes the presentation on the waste sort and recyclables composition study and the city perspective from the zero waste and where we're headed, at least with our initiatives. Dr. Black is here, and I'm sure he would answer questions if you're interested in an update from him and his stakeholder group that he started. But do you have any questions for us before I leave the podium?
Mayor Davis, should we give you the first crack? Do you have any questions from Jim and Jim?
Questions? No, I have some comments, maybe later when we get to the, if we get to a discussion stage, but the presentation was quite factual. My hat's off to those volunteers who went out there and sort of through trash. That did not look like a clean job. But nothing like data, and I think we should remember that the state's looking at our data too and our processes, because we will probably have an opportunity to be a model for the state. But I'll, if there are hard questions, I'll let those go. I can save my comments a little bit later.
Mr. Longline, any questions for the staff?
Yeah, I've been involved in recycling at a large scale for a long time. My years at Phillips, it was driven by zero waste and European standards, and there's a lot of money involved, too, when you're talking that. It's on.
I think it turned it off there.
I couldn't hear yours either, Carl.
I think it's going to be replaced.
Money's on.
We have trouble with it. Okay. Yeah, a lot of money at stake, and plus the waste stream, because it costs money to dump. But my big things that I see are recyclable or things that don't break down, like your metals, and things that are so easily recyclable and reusable, like your papers and cardboards. I guess my issue here, that, you know, I'm doing a great job at the recycling center, but it's not very convenient. And has there ever been any thought to having like little satellite collection places around town staffed specific times? I know you couldn't just have a free-for-all because you'd get undesirable trash in there. But I think that'd be a good idea, is in other places of town, have a little satellite collection, like one day a week.
So we do think that that needs to be part of the discussion. If you remember our last one, we had the, what we used to use the term, before Zero Waste Initiative came along, we had the term, the additional separation of recyclables. That's just how we referred to, we need to do more. There's still stuff that we're not doing, and we know we're not doing it. We kind of, we do think that that's ultimately going to be part of the solution. We've had some pretty encouraging talks from a few different businesses that could help in that regard. I think a lot more, we have to get a lot farther down the road with, one, we need to get the data into the hands of the Zero Waste Initiative, because we, I do think that that's the case. I think you're absolutely right, that we're going to find that we're going to need to do some kind of either satellite location or satellite operation in order to get some of this waste. But we kind of want to know, we kind of want to find out what the needs are from the Zero Waste Initiative in terms of how to collect it, where to collect it, when to collect it, that kind of stuff, before we can take it farther. But it is, that is definitely part of the solution. One that comes to mind that I've thought of since this began was the additional collection of glass. It's a good example for you to, for people to understand is, just think of a restaurant or bar that has a whole lot of glass that may or may not have an opportunity to recycle. There is an opportunity for us to come up with a way to partner with that business to maybe get creative and find a way to capture that glass and get it back into some kind of recycled product. But we agree.
And I know, I save metal, and I used to have a scrapper that lived a few blocks from me, and it was just real convenient to drive by and just throw it in the back of his truck. And, you know, the recycle center does not do any metals, do they?
No, no, we currently don't take any metals except aluminum cans or like soup cans, those kinds of things, but no scrap iron. Now, if you go to the landfill, you unload your, most of the people unload in the convenience area, and we actually do ask folks to separate their white goods and their metals, and we collect those separately so they don't go into the landfill and they sell those off later.
And I had a quick question about concrete, scrap concrete. They're getting ready to tear out Ohio Street down here. Where's all that concrete go?
There are different contractors in town here that crush it, and others use it just for fill. Some of it goes to the landfill as construction debris.
Yes, some of it returns to the, it becomes the contractors. Some of the, some of the concrete is, like, we have a lot of, we have a lot of concrete disposal sites in Salina. You've heard us talk about the old city dump program. We have a, like, I think 16, if I recall, old city dumps in Salina. And one of the things that we have to be careful of is concrete that has, that still has rebar in it. It can't be reused, and you can't add to the old city dump. All of that material has to be put under 18 inches of soil. It's something that we're currently going through right now at the old shooting range, trying to get rid of that, not get rid of, but bury, properly bury that concrete with the steel rebar in it. Some of that concrete ends up getting reused. When we built the stage across the street, that, the fill underneath that stage is crushed concrete from a previous city project. It's reused in that way a lot. Another example is asphalt. Every year, we, the city staff gets 2,000 tons of asphalt millings from our projects that we, you know, contractually, the contractor is obligated to bring to us. We store it at the old, we store it at the wastewater treatment facility site, and then we use that throughout the year on all our concrete and asphalt patches that we do so that we're, you know, reusing that product. So if it doesn't have steel in it, it can definitely be reused. We try to reuse it in every, kind of every way that we can. When it has steel in it, it's a little more difficult to be able to use.
I guess I'll end that, I think this, the water bottle was the biggest mistake the world ever made, far as environment and landfills.
Come on up if you've got any comments. I don't know if the other commissioners have questions.
Well, and they may. Just some of the questions, I think, will be addressed. I'm Phil Black. I live at 815 Spruce, and I'm the Chair of Solid Waste Committee, and I'm also, I guess, the facilitator of the Zero Waste Initiative. I wanted to call it project. We invited about 26 participants, had 24 respond, 10, or 15 showed up, 14, 15. But we have, still have interest. They want to be there, but the timing was bad. We had both Kansas State, Polytechnic, and Kansas Wesleyan. We have both USD 305 and 306. We had JRI Management, which has 74 Freddys, which I had no idea they had that many. So I have a little knowledge about all this. And City of Salina was there, Mayor Davis was there, Salina Regional was there, Great Plains Manufacturing talked endlessly about all the pallets. I had no idea that that was an issue, but that was one of the good things that came out of this, was that we had a discussion among all of us, what can we do with these pallets? So my goal in this, I'm, and I'm ironically, or coincidentally, I'm a doctoral student at K-State in Leadership Communication, and I'm doing, everything, every class I take, I tie to zero waste. I'm talking, I want to find every bit of information I can and use that as a resource to help us get there. Our goal at the first meeting was just to have an initial discussion. You were talking about some of the specific things. We're nowhere near that in this group. We're just trying to get our heads around, what is the problem? Where are we getting all this? You know, the pallets is a good example. And I would say we're not even close to solutions yet, but all of them were interested. 306, interestingly enough, the superintendent from that was there, and he talked, he was animated throughout the whole thing. He really was interested in what, he wanted to know, are we putting stuff out there that we think is going to recycling? Some of those kind of problems. So I honestly think you get good minds together, you kind of come up with some ideas. I also wanted to point out that the Salina area Chamber of Commerce was there, Eric Brown, and I was thankful that he was there. And I want, Mike, I know that you had talked, when we first came up with all this, you were worried about concerns that businesses were going to be, it would cost money for businesses. I can assure you, Eric Brown will make sure that doesn't happen. That was one of the things he said, but that's what we need. Just as a frame of reference, I was president of the school board at 305 when we started that bond issue, 110 million. The model we used was we had, I think, nine stakeholder meetings, which were businesses like this. Were you part of that? Were you in that? So I don't remember where we started bringing the public in, partway through. We kind of had to have a consensus, I think, but if the city decides to bring the public in earlier, that's fine. There's no absolute structure to this that we must follow. People ask me from these organizations, what do you see as our role? I said, I see you seeing what your role is, not me telling you, because I'm not the expert here. I'm good at getting people together and having meetings and calling people. I'm not embarrassed to call anybody, but when it comes to the stuff that these guys are dealing with, I'm not an expert. So we need everybody involved. And the other part of it was, I think Julie Coleman's actually Director of Zero Waste Management.
Correct.
Under KDHC. I invited her. She now wants to come to all the meetings. She's coming away with ideas. She says, I have so many ideas, I don't even know, I need to talk to my staff. So we have a very positive reputation about this. If we take it slowly, if we're patient, we don't try to force anything, because I don't want to cost businesses money either. I've had long conversations with Tony Dong about Martinelli's, and I'm looking back there and saying, where is, they don't have any room for anything. So we want to do this right in a way that everybody's involved, because otherwise, if it comes down to like a 3-2 vote among you, the next commission come in and do a 3-2 vote again. And so we don't want this to be a burdensome, burden on anyone. So with that, I will end, unless you have any questions.
We appreciate your work, really, and it's the most important thing, to be a good organizer. Was mentioned, you only have five on your committee.
Yeah, we're working on that.
You're working on that, and that's available to the whole county, or is it?
Well, some of them have to be outside the city, but in the county. You have those kind of requirements, and so you need a youth person and so forth. I've had two people that said they wanted to sign up. I think one has filed a form, and another one's going to. But we need people outside the county, or outside the city from the county as well, I think.
Yeah, we have eight slots open, slots open, and we have both county and city positions open, so.
What I don't know is, when is the next time you appoint them?
Well, that should be.
Do you know, Mike?
Yeah, here, within the month.
Within a month, okay. We'll keep, I'm consciously working on trying to get people to, solid waste management is. people to, solid waste management, just, this is not a sexy committee, you know? And we only meet three times a year except for the work. So it's, it's not a huge commitment. I had one guy who said he would do it. You would know him if I said it. I'm not gonna say his name. He said, ah, I'm too lazy. I decided not to do it. So, but, uh, anyway.
Hopefully there may be those paying attention today that might.
Yeah.
Peak their interest.
We'll get people on there. Oh, I did wanna tell you, Riley, Riley County, one of my fellow students is the Director of the Habitat for Humanity in Manhattan. He's also on the Riley County Council is what they call Solid Waste Management Council. And he asked me if there's any chance in the world I'd be willing to establish residency there so that I could be on that. I said, nah, I got enough here, so.
Thank you.
So board appointments will come to the commissioners on August 11th, the, the background information, uh, and it'll be on your agenda August 15th.
Any other questions that commissioners have?
Carl?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just want, uh, Jacob still there at the, uh, at his workstation?
I am here.
Could you put that picture up for me that I sent you?
Yes.
I appreciate it. I'm, uh, in Atlanta, Georgia for a medical meeting and, uh, I was sitting on the bus getting ready to come back to the hotel for, for this. And this is the billboard out in front of the State Farm Arena, which, which is their equivalent of the Sprint Center, the T-Mobile Center in, in Kansas City. It's where the Atlanta Hawks play basketball. But in addition to advertising for upcoming shows, this pops up. And I went and did some quick research. Uh, this is the first large arena in the country to get, uh, what's called a platinum certificate, uh, from the Green Business Certification Incorporated. Uh, but they have managed to recycle 90% of their waste. Now, they started planning in 2019. They just got the award in April. So just gives you an idea of the time it takes to sit down from conceptual stage and actually, you know, have a finished product. Now granted, you could say, well, the, the waste coming out of a basketball arena is somewhat limited, which I'm sure made it easy, but they've had to set up, you know, relationships with, with companies to recycle the, the glass, the aluminum, uh, you know, you, when you, when you serve food, if you know you wanna cut down on waste, you serve it on paper. You don't serve it on styrofoam. So there are just lots of little decisions that can be made. They brag that if you get a bottle of beer there, that same glass will be back in another bottle within the month. I mean, just to have, and just, you know, reusing things. And what we're looking for here, you know, when we say by 2050, uh, you know, 90% is, is, is a lofty achievement, but 2050 is 28 years from now. I mean, this is not something we're trying to do in the next few years. Uh, but, you know, we, we spend hundreds of dollars, probably some of us $200 a month for water. Uh, we may spend $100 a month getting our yard cleaned, but we tend to, as a society, to be a little stingy on what we wanna pay to get rid of our trash. Yet it's what's gonna clog up our, our, our environment. And if we keep reusing, using natural resources, it's gonna hasten global warming. Uh, we've been recycling and reusing water for a long time. And if, if, if you get your water out the Smoky Hill, uh, you know, with the community upstream flushes is what you, what you drink and, and just pass it on down. So, you know, our most basic resource, we've been reusing for a real long time. Um, but it, it's that, that mindset. And a lot of companies think this is a very lofty goal and they're very proud of it. So I, the, the reports I heard today, I, I think were exemplary and, uh, I think we're off, off, uh, in the right direction. And, you know, certifications like this will attract more people than they're gonna turn off as far as economic survival of our city. So I think we're heading in the right direction, but it, it's a slow, long road. I'll, you, I appreciate it.
Well, I agree with you, Mayor. I think there's opportunities there and I like the examples about the bottles, the pallets maybe look like a low hanging fruit. I wish there was places to go with gypsum board and, and construction lumber, but, uh, maybe those will present themselves over time. So thank you for the presentation and unless you have any more comments for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I'll be 96 in 2050.
Thank you. Almost there with you. Uh, we'll take a brief break until four o'clock in the regular meeting time.
All right, it's four o'clock. I'd like to bring to order this meeting at the Salina City Commission for August 1st, 2022. I'd like to ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Hopick.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
If you are able, would you please stand with us for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Might point out that Mayor Davis is joining us by Zoom today. He's away and felt that maybe the meeting might be better administered if I would sit in for him. So that's why I am taking his place as a chair today. We'll move on with item number three, awards and proclamations. We have none. Public hearings scheduled for a certain time. We have none. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of July 25, 2022.
What did I miss something?
No, no, I tried to interrupt too quickly. I'm sorry. There is a revised set of minutes at your seats. I just wanted to explain that briefly. On the top of page three, the second and third paragraphs at the top of the page were added to just provide some additional context to the discussion that happened last week. So coming out of executive session, Mayor Davis, prior to the vote, Mayor Davis clarified that the purpose was to decide if the reason the right-of-way that was originally created still exists. And stated that if it does not, and there is no public interest in keeping the property for that purpose, then we would have no reason not to vacate the right-of-way. And then Greg Banks, the city attorney, stated that in regards to the reference and the ordinance to reversion and recording, final language will be provided for second reading. So those two statements were added to the minutes and you have a revised version at your seats.
Any questions or comments from this commission on that item? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, approved, the minutes as revised. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That'll pass five zero. Next items are administration, 6.1.
Item 6.1, approve ordinance number 22-11127 on second reading, vacating the two east-west alleys north of Ash Street and west of Chicago Street in the Elmdale addition.
Vice Mayor Ryan, I'll be recusing myself at this time.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hopick. As background, this ordinance 22-11127 was passed on first reading on July 25th, 2022. Since that time, no other comments have been received. Is there any other background or input from the staff? Anyone from the public like to comment on this item for second reading? And we'll bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion for this item?
I move we approve ordinance number 22-11127 on second reading.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Aye. That item will pass four to zero. We'll move on to, well, have Mr. Commissioner Hopick come back.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I may, the, you made reference to that as passing four votes to none. There were just three of you voting in the affirmative on the.
Were there affirmative votes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor.
I apologize. I apologize.
Looking over your shoulder.
My fault. Sorry.
Alrighty. That'll take us to 6.2.
Item 6.2, approve ordinance number 22-11128 on second reading, vacating a portion of the right-of-way at the southwest corner of Broadway Boulevard and North Street.
As background on this, it was passed on July 25th, 2022, and since that time, section four of the ordinance has been edited to refer to the reversion under applicable Kansas law instead of the reference to KSA 13443. The ordinance will be recorded against lots two, three, and four in addition to lots one, and that was the item that was mentioned in the revision of the minutes today. Is there any further input from staff?
No, that doesn't. Thank you.
Anything from the public on this item? Bring it back to the commission for action, please.
Vice Mayor Ryan, I move we approve ordinance number 22-11128 on second reading as modified between first and second reading.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Could we have a roll call for this item, please?
Yes. Commissioner Hopick.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Aye. That will pass five to zero. 6.3, please.
Item 6.3, approve ordinance number 22-11126 on first reading, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
Mr. Skrag, are you up for this one?
Certainly. I'll take this in place of Debbie Pack. Commissioners, as I'm sure you're aware, throughout the year, we investigate code violations of various forms. When one is found to be confirmed, we provide a notice of violation by certified mail. It itemizes the violation. It provides a date by which it must be abated by the property owner. It explains the due process that's available to them, including their right to request an extension. If no action is taken, then the city has the authority to order an abatement, which we do as needed, and the property owner is responsible for those costs. If the deadline passes and we conduct a follow-up inspection, excuse me, we can then can order abatement. I would tell you that we go through an annual process to solicit bids for abatement services. There's broad categories of services that we know we need on a regular basis, so we conduct a competitive process to try to zero in on that pricing and then have an abatement contractor identified and available as needed throughout the year. There is an exception to that notice process as provided by statute. There is one notice per season for tall grass and weeds, and that notice then explains that if there are subsequent violations, those will be abated without further notice. Once we order the abatement, the contractor completes that work and the property owner has 30 days to pay those costs. State statute provides that if those costs remain unpaid, they can be assessed against the property, which has to be certified to the county clerk by August 25th of each year. So at the point of certification, then it goes on to the tax rolls as a liability against the property. And then given the time of year, it's appropriate for us to then identify those that need to be certified to the county clerk, which is the action that's before you. In this particular cycle, we billed $102,353 worth of abatements. $35,578 of those were paid in advance. That leaves a remaining amount of $66,775 to be assessed. The ordinance that you have before you does just that in terms of that assessment. You also have an itemization of the individual properties and the amounts of those assessments. I would tell you that, you know, tall grass and weeds is certainly a high-volume item, but other services that we use for abatement are everything from removing fallen tree limbs and branches, removing construction debris and concrete, removing just trash and debris from the property, whether that's appliances and things like that or true trash and debris. And then, as you know, we also, as needed, will secure and board up dangerous structures. There is an additional process for declaring a building dangerous in that abatement process, but that's kind of the breadth of the different types of abatement that we might need. There's an hourly rate for those. There's the tipping fee for those. And so some of those bigger amounts that you might see on that list, a lot of times are examples of needing to clean up a lot that has a sizable amount of trash and debris on it. So with that, we've identified the typical array of options for you. You could approve the ordinance as presented. You could postpone consideration and provide direction about additional information that you'd like for your consideration. You could approve it with, on first reading, provide direction regarding additional information between first and second reading. Or you could choose to deny approving the ordinance, which would essentially not levy those special assessments at this time. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from commissioners?
No questions.
I got a couple. How much time is there between the time they get noticed up the second time and the abatement date?
Some of that depends on the violation, but statutorily, tall grass and weeds has a timeframe, and I'm trying, looking for help. I'm looking past you, Jim. I believe it's five days for tall grass and weeds, but as mentioned in the staff report, we do provide information about the ability to request an extension. So depending on circumstances, if they're responsive, they can reach out and request an extension and agree to an alternate date if it appears that they'll make substantial progress.
So why is it that we don't send them a second notice? We just.
Oh, on the tall grass and weeds?
Yeah, on the tall grass.
In part, that's statutorily provided, and essentially, we're trying to, at the beginning of that season, notify them of their responsibilities. And if it's a habitual problem, by the time you get through the notice, the period runs, you give an extension, and then we notice up the abatement contractor, we're frequently getting calls from the neighborhood that it's out of hand, so trying to.
Quite a nuisance.
Yeah, trying to provide that education on the front end and then have some accountability thereafter.
For months, we had a code amendment to chapter 31 that was on our future agendas. Is that somehow related to this?
The grass and weeds portion? There was some clarification language, but I don't know that it changes this significantly other than how we're addressing some of the areas of responsibility that were up in the air in terms of rights of way and private property owner responsibility. So that's still forthcoming, but somewhat relates, but doesn't significantly impact this.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this item? If there's no public comment, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Vice Mayor Ryan, I move we approve ordinance number 22-11126, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-11126 on first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. That will pass five oh. 6.4.
Item 6.4, award the bid for Quonset storage building demolition for the amount of $6,000 and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Excel Dirt and Excavating LLC of Salina, Kansas upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Mr. Koach.
All right. Okay. Good afternoon. Jim Koach, operations manager for Public Works. We're here to talk specifically about the award of a demolition contract for an old building at our general services offices about five blocks east of here. But it's part of a much bigger project is why this is being brought to you folks for final approval. We have been visiting with you for years and finally went to automated side-load trucks for our sanitation department. And the trucks are so big, they won't fit in our shops or they won't fit in our storage buildings. They won't fit in our wash bays. So at the time, we knew that was a problem. There's a lot of hydraulics that goes on these vehicles that we would like to keep out of the Kansas weather as much as we can. So we had talked about an equipment building being erected on the general services site where this, we call it the Quonset hut, but it's a big culvert-looking building that looks like a half of a galvanized pipe. So those sanitation trucks cost about a quarter million dollars apiece. We have six of them. They have a life cycle of about seven years, so we'd like to protect them as much as we can and hopefully make them last longer. So we've got some slides here. I'll run through quickly just as far as the need for the sanitation building and the proposed site. The next slide, please. This is the proposed building. There'll be six bays for the sanitation trucks. One bay is a combined bay, which will also serve as a wash bay. So they can park the truck in the middle with floor drains and spray the vehicles from either side and keep them safe and sanitary. There's six bays there. Two of the bays will be reserved for storage for the streets department. It's about half of the volume that they had in the old storage building, but it's much more usable as far as being vehicle-friendly, larger doors. The existing building is just not real practical with the size of equipment that we're working with today. But it's 44 by 120 feet long. We're hoping to have a storage, a wash bay, and then also a service bay with an equipment or a mechanic's pit in it so that they can service the vehicles from underneath them. The main thing was to keep them out of the weather, have them, plug them in, keep them warm at night, have them start easier in the mornings, and then have the hydraulic systems last longer. Next slide, please. This is a general services yard that's five or six blocks east of us here. North is to the top of the page. We have a street barn on the far left. We have kind of our administrative offices. The next building to the right with our flood control unit and traffic control units adjacent to their part of that building. Right south of there, there are some salt racks, and you can see where the sanitation trucks are parked outside now, the ones that don't fit. And we've also got seven packer trucks that we use for special pickups, yard waste and leaf pickup that we do store inside in the existing shop building and central garage area. Up in the upper right-hand corner is the location of the Quonset that we're proposing to tear down. It's a 60 by 60 building with about 10-foot ceilings. And to the far east of that yard, there are some more salt spreader racks where we hang our salt spreaders that we take in and out of our dump trucks during snow and ice removal. So those are the ones that have to be moved to build the new building. We'd like to move all of the racks at the same time to a central location on city property relatively close to a secure site. And we're going to talk about that here in a minute. But the salt racks that are directly behind general services, if you could point at those, Jacob. All of those trees along there, that's Smoky Hill River, just adjacent to the old mill dam, part of the river renewal project. And we really don't think the salt racks and sanitation trucks is what we want the people looking at when we make that major investment, hopefully, in the future. It's just north of the community theater, if you, and Founder's Park, if you're familiar with it. So we'd like to remove those salt racks. It looks pretty calm there now, but when you have all those sanitation trucks, the flood guys with their big tractors and the traffic guys with their boom trucks and people with trailers, it's really congested. So we'd like to kind of clean up that area, remove the salt racks, get some of the equipment out of the area, and then also maybe provide some more employee parking. So that's kind of the purpose. So that's kind of the purpose of what we're doing. So we want to clean up the backyard, relieve congestion, add employee parking, do some preparations for when the river renewal project is, we make that investment and we have something decent for folks to look at. Next slide, Jacob, please. That's the existing building. And I said that it was built in the sixties, but honestly, I couldn't find an erection date. So I don't know when it was built for sure, but it's old World War kind of two-style. The ceilings are real low, and with a lot of these metal buildings, they're completely hollow, so they're nice and tall. This has, it looks like, a lattice of metal inside there that supports all of the galvanized tin. It's not structural tin, it's just on a lattice of... So the ceiling is only about ten feet tall. The bolts are at least sixty years old, they're all rusted together. Taking it down and using it somewhere else is much more than we could handle, and we thought it would be cost prohibitive. To get it out of the way and build a new building was much more cost-effective. So that's the direction that we're recommending. You can kind of see it into the right. I'm looking, you're looking to the north there, but to the right of that picture is kind of the salt spreader racks. And the next picture, if you'd go to that, Jacob, is the remaining salt spreader racks that are hung there. And when we need them, we need them, but they're kind of in the way all the rest of the year. You know, they take up a lot of room. They have been built years and years ago. They're, I think if we had a major earthquake, they may be the only thing standing in Salina because they're big iron pipes and a lot of concrete that are holding those up. So they're as stout as you can build them, I believe. Next slide, please, Jacob. This is kind of the vertical view or looking down on the existing Quonset Hut. You can see that it will match the width or the dimension of the facilities building right next to it. It's going to be behind a privacy fence. It'll be a newer, neater, cleaner-looking building than the old military-style building that's there now. And we're hoping that that building will be insulated, be weatherproof, and last us an extremely long time. When we moved the salt spreader racks, we've been working with Dean and his department on getting the necessary approvals, but the household hazardous waste is up on Elm Street, just a couple blocks north of our building. The city fueling site is right there, next to the household hazardous waste, which is the little white canopy in the photo. And then the water department, their yard is, the water and parks department both have property just to the north of us. So there was a little green patch right there that is city property that is just the right size for the number of racks that we need. Actually, two more than we have right now. And we'd like to fill in the ditch, pave the lot, put a privacy fence around it, and it'll be out of the way and give us a lot more room down where we are with general services. We've been working with Development Services to get the needed setback variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and also just recently received our building permit for this area. So we're hoping to move forward with the relocation of the salt spreader racks real soon. And that's as far as the slides. The rest of this is just discussing the need for tearing the Quonset Hut down and the construction of the new sanitation and street building. Construction of the new sanitation, storage building, and salt spreader racks costs have previously been presented, and relocation costs were previously presented with a budget of about $375,000. With bids and construction planned for 2023. We're all aware of the dramatic costs, construction costs, how they've gone up in the last year or two and in the planning process. We do hope to move the salt spreader racks with our street crews, the street department. They're short-staffed right now, but we're hoping we can move it with our folks. There is some construction cost for cement and pipe and those kinds of things. The building itself, the construction and relocation cost was budgeted at $375,000. The building by itself is $425,000, and we think the relocation costs are going to be about $75,000. So a total of $500,000 instead of $375,000. We have to remove the Quonset Hut and the salt racks to construct the new building, so it's kind of a package deal. We're hoping to get the project, the area cleared by the end of 2022 so that the construction of the new sanitation building can commence in 2023. So we've led a contract for demolishing or dismantling and salvaging. It's open-ended recently, and we had one bid. That bid was by Excel Dirt and Excavating. They gave us a really competitive bid of $6,000 to remove it, and they have to remove it by the end of the year. The proposed funding for removal of the Quonset Hut is available within the current sanitation fund balance. And we go through the details here with the current sanitation fund balance. At the end of last year was $974,391.40. And we talked with our finance director, Debbie Pack, and she's projecting that as things are going right now, that fund balance will be about $810,000. So it is going down as we go through the year. Taking $6,000 of that, only knocks it down to $804,000. And the recommended sanitation fund minimum is $500,000. So we're well above the recommended balance for that. Like I said, we talked about $300,000 for the building, $75,000 to $80,000 for relocation. We were at $375,000. It's looking like it's going to be more like a half a million dollars. $6,000 is the price of this demo, which is the very first piece of it. And before we jump into anything, we want to make sure that you want to move forward with the whole thing. So we're making you fully aware of the current circumstances and offer you the following options. Awarding, approving a motion to award the bid with the Quonset Hut Storage Building Demolition to Excel Dirt and Excavating LLC of Salina, Kansas in the amount of $6,000 and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Excel Dirt and Excavating LLC of Salina, Kansas upon fulfillment of the prerequisites under the bid documents. As usual, you can do the same thing, award the bid with amendments, or you can postpone consideration of the Quonset Hut Storage Building demolition, or you can not approve moving forward with the Quonset Hut Storage Building demolition and provide us further direction. So I will stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Koach? Mayor Davis, would you like to go first?
Yeah, just one, thank you. I'm assuming you probably already figured this out, but there's enough space behind where you're going to, or in front of where you're going to put the spreader rack holders or the racks to get the trucks in? I don't know how you put the racks on the trucks, but there's enough space for all that maneuvering behind there?
Yes, yes, there's two rows, there are two rows of racks on the proposed lot. And they basically pull in and they back underneath the rack and chain it down into the bed of the dump truck. And then to unload it is just the reverse process. They back in there, raise up the rack a little bit and chain it to the spreader itself, the salt spreader. We jack it up and chain it up and then drive out from underneath it. So there's plenty of room to pull in there and back either direction in the proposed site.
And the salt and sand will still remain where it is now, then?
Yes, yeah, it's a matter of, if you notice, last year, we had several news releases when storms were approaching saying, "We're expecting a storm tonight. We're treating the road, or we're plowing the roads, or we're going to pre-treat the roads." And it's a couple blocks from where we are now. It's not going to be inconvenient for us to drive two blocks to put on the racks and then start the whole process. And then they clean out the racks, they auger the salt back into the shed that we don't use, and then they remove the racks or the spreaders from the trucks once the storm's over.
I knew you had it figured out, I appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Hoffa? Mlickwitz? Mr. Longbon, any question?
The bid came in exceptionally low. Have we had experience with Excel on previous projects?
They have, I personally have not. They have done some work for the city before and licensed with the city to do work.
You just talked about storing the salt. Where's the salt gravel stored?
Jacob, if you could pull up that site map, please. You see where the Quonset Hut is now? The salt dome, it say dome, it looks more like a built garage. It's not necessarily a dome, but along the north third of that building and the south third of that building are areas that we store backhoes and other equipment. But the centerpiece of that shed is built up with big timbers, and we store our salt in there. So we load, where the vehicles are parked on the west side of the building now is where we have a loader and we load our trucks during a snow or ice event.
Right, okay.
Is this a messy process, and will that happen still over there in that vicinity?
All of the ice, all of the snow, one more time, all of the salt that will still be processed on the spreaders and stuff here. When we go pick up the spreaders, they're clean. And when we take them back, the spreaders are clean. But all of the salt will still remain in this area right here.
And then the balance of this is kind of a half a million dollars. That's going to come from the sanitation fund eventually?
That's the proposed source of funding. The bulk of this building is for the sanitation, the automated side loader trucks, but because we're taking away the street department's storage area, two of the bays will be dedicated to the street department, which is a general fund department. But we're proposing to pay for it all out of sanitation fund balance.
So I guess we won't have a building before this winter cycle, I presume?
No, no, it will hopefully be up and built by next winter. We're hoping we can get, we're working with Facilities Manager Troy Reiner right now to get architectural plans and hopefully get the building bid later this year with construction starting hopefully next spring sometime.
There are no other questions?
I had a comment, I would like to come in. Sanitation, we're a year into the new trucks, and I think we've got all the bugs worked out, and it seems to be working well.
We've had, been very fortunate, the community has worked well with us as far as the new set-out dates. We completely redid all of our routes and collecting from one side, and we've worked out through a lot of the issues we were having early, so thank you.
It's been a good improvement.
I agree with that. I started to throw on there, what about the trees? We had to, have trees gotten in the way in certain neighborhoods?
We, the Parks Department had them trimmed higher than our initial sanitation trucks, but we are having some tree issues. And I don't know if you recall or not, Commissioner Ryan, but we talked about that last year. And we do have a proposal to hire two more arborists to work hand-in-hand with the Parks Department, three days a week on street trees and two days a week on parks trees. And we have a proposal that we'll be bringing back to you later this year to add that staff and the necessary equipment. But we talked about that last summer when we were establishing the rates for this year, and you folks were in agreement that it was necessary and it was worthwhile, so...
Just couldn't recall if we'd gotten there. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item?
Ben Winholz, Salina. You've known by now that I usually push the cart faster than the horse wants to go, and I'm not against this building being built to be able to protect our investment of one and a half million dollars worth of trash trucks. That's something that public should have been thought of way before you purchased the trash trucks, but that's beside the point. What my point is, and what my question is, is can anyone in staff tell me if this $500,000 investment of this building is going to be money being thrown away if you go by the master plan of the river renewal project has in there that the whole complex of the general services area needs to be relocated in order for Founder's Park to be beautified and the whole area around it? So is the, and that was at a unknown where we're going to get the money cost of $10 million. So can staff tell me whether this is still on the board in the master plan or have they taken it out and the general services is going to actually stay there with Founder's Park right beside it?
The vision that Mr. Winholz is describing is kind of that overall master plan, which we've had to phase back considerably as part of the 2016 sales tax election. And so Phase 1 and future phases, immediate future phases certainly don't have funding or intention for relocating the general services facility. If anything, it may be modifications need to be made to better interface with the river, but I don't think the river master plan has any funding or intention to completely relocate this facility at this time.
So could it be said that moving this building across that, our campus there, has the potential to aid the river renewal by getting the building farther away from the channel itself, it'll be farther out the distance at least? It's heavily wooded all the way across there, so I could imagine that being maintained and whatever's done on the other side.
Yeah, I think the things that are closest to the river as it relates to this project are the salt spreaders. The Quonset Hut building is there off of Ash Street, so it's kind of on the north side of the site already. So the building will be taken down and replaced. Really, it's furthest away from the river, the salt spreaders being relocated would get them off the riverbank.
Anyone else like to comment on this item? Bring it back to the commission for action, please.
Vice Mayor, oh, go ahead.
You go ahead.
Vice Mayor, I move that this commission award the bid for the Quonset Hut Storage Building Demolition to Excel Dirt and Excavating LLC of Salina, Kansas in the amount of $6,000 and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Excel Dirt and Excavating LLC of Salina, Kansas upon fulfillment of all prerequisites, under the bid documents.
Been moved and seconded to award the bid for Quonset Storage Building demolition in the amount of $6,000 to Excel Excavating and fulfilling the prerequisites under the bid documents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That will pass 5-0. Item seven on the agenda is development business. We have none other business? Are there items that other commissioners would like to bring forward?
I do have one comment that I'd like to make, and then probably one question for city staff. First thing I'd like to do is to thank the city of Salina staff for the work they did over the last four or five days for Lead Sled. There was a lot of excitement in town, and I know the police department was busy Thursday with the parade and obviously Friday with the drags and public works. I believe public works is who should be thanked for getting the drag racing facility ready. And they were parked on both sides of Markley out there, so there was a, the weather was great. And looking at the restaurant and the hotel parking lots, I guess you could say Lead Sled probably has a significant financial impact on the city of Salina. So I want to again thank the staff for the time they put in preparing for that. I guess the second thing I have a question is, I know the state awarded us a significant amount of money for some housing, and just wanted to know if city staff could give us some kind of update as far as where we might be on the apartment projects?
It's okay, I'm going to call Lauren Driscoll to answer that question.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. We are working on steps towards the development agreement right now. Requires several pieces of information to kind of be nailed down so that agreement can be put together. We have a handful of deliverables that should be here today that we'll start incorporating in with bond council. Then from there, there's kind of the graceful dance that is back and forth of getting that development agreement put together. Then from there, there's kind of the graceful dance that is back and forth of getting that development agreement put together. Um, this is a little different than normal. Um, just trying to take into effect the different financial sources, both county funds, our funds and state funds. And then taking in the IRB component of that to draft that. Um, also looking at the financing components, multiple sites and multiple different sets of units and project milestones. So we're hoping to be in front of the commission late September, early October. And so, you know, depending on how weather goes, I mean, we've seen a lot of winter construction start in the last couple of years. And then in addition, I did do a little bit of a head count. We've got from your other activities over the last few months, um, with adding aeroplanes, you should have two hundred and fifty eight-ish uh owner occupied units um under construction related to RHIDs. Um, I'm sure if you've driven bass, past Southview Estates, formerly known as Ryan Edition recently, you've seen they're coming along nicely. Then aeroplanes are going to be the owner occupied townhomes over by the airport. Um, the Driever project would bring five hundred units of rental. We continue to have conversations um with developers and builders. Particularly starting to have conversations with builders from other communities who may be interested in lots. We've got a list of uh plats that have happened recently and who those contacts are. So if we get anybody asking us, hey, do you have anything in town that's buildable? We just hand them all the same standardized list. Um, we have one senior facility now under uh construction. If you've uh gone by Ohio, the memory care and assisted living facility is underway for Cedarhurst. And then staff has spent the last couple of months working um together, listening to other communities like Lawrence, Topeka, Wichita and North Central Regional Planning Commission to understand various rehab and infill programs. And in fact, we're actually meeting as a staff internally on Wednesday to kind of boil down what we, how we can take our existing program, better that, relaunch that, and then also look at um city manager Scrag had identified a million dollars that could be used towards infill and trying to put those funds to use and having those hit our existing neighborhoods. So that's kind of where we're at with housing right now.
Um, the group you began talking about that you're hammering out the development, is that Driever?
Correct.
And so it's still at the same scope that five hundred apartments that, that we started with?
We started with eighteen hundred, but we didn't get as much money as we asked for. So yes, we're at five hundred now.
Oh yeah, five hundred stuck in my memory. Are there any other prospects for apartments out there that, of any scale?
I, I think there's prospects. I think one, everybody's just kind of waiting to see how this goes. As um city manager Scrag has said several times, um, it's just about breaking the log jam. You may have read um over the weekend, uh the Lee Building project and Overland Property Groups was notified that they did get the second phase of their project. Um, so those would be income subsidized or income qualified, but those would be additional rentals coming into the downtown. I, I also think, and I'm sure you're all very aware, that the interest rates and some of the things that are going on are, are having people kind of take a second look at projects. We continue to kind of have conversations about apartments, but it is, it's one of our biggest challenges. And it's not just us. I've had a couple of communities call over the last couple of months, kind of asking us, you know, what are you doing? So it's, it's definitely not just Salina, but it definitely, to me, it helps hit home that what we're doing is necessary because we're not the only ones having these problems. I also had a conversation uh this spring with uh city manager Scrag about our housing study and updating that annually. So we have um an agreement now with RDG that they're going to do an annual update of our numbers. So I got the revised document last week. So we should be getting that kind of finalized and the back and forth done here in the next couple of weeks. And that will show an even more current version of that data we've had, but also take into account some things like inflation and increased construction costs and how that might affect things. In addition to those new census numbers that came in.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we've also seen an uptick in manufactured housing locations as kind of infill of some of those available lots?
Yeah, um, we do have several parks in town. Um, several of them were empty or just hadn't had new units put in and three of them under new ownership by one individual company. And they have been putting new units in. And then a uh second project, North Salina, you may remember uh North Thirteenth Street was a real issue. That property has a new owner. They've cleaned that up. Phase one units um are moving in and we're trying to get them through second phase. It requires they have a looped water line. So just working through that. So those would also bring additional um affordable housing units to town.
And are those rental, are those for sale or are those rent?
It just depends, depends on the model the park is running. Um, a lot of them do, will do a rent to own process.
Back to the Driever project, is the West Crawford Old Hotel still part of that, those talks?
Yes. I mean, that's kind of our, it's one of the things that we've said needs to happen. I mean, there's been a talk about a lot of different locations, but for us, getting that Crawford corridor cleaned up and getting those units there, they're centralized. Um, and it would just change that whole corridor for the better and deal with a a challenging structure. So yes, that's been one of our primary areas. Um, not all the units will fit there, so they're looking at a secondary location.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Driscoll?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the update.
I had a comment about the weekend. Uh, it was a great weekend in Salina. Uh, you couldn't have bought better weather with that lottery ticket that someone bought. And I, I, I took my time to uh stroll through the flower gardens at Oakdale Park and I have never seen the flower beds at Oakdale look so nice as they did this weekend. And uh commend the park staff and everyone that worked hard.
And I'm sure many people uh driving their lead sleds appreciated Oakdale Road being resurfaced for mire to the park entrance. Thank you for that. Any other, other business?
If I could, uh Jim Toich can provide an update on the mowing question that's come up as it relates to a couple of the medians in the community?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Jim Toich, Director of Public Works. Um, certainly there's been recent community and city commission inquiry into some of the locations that are um under the responsibility of the citywide mowing contract. Um, so first, I guess I would say the citywide mowing contract is divided into four different um zones or categories. The first one is right of way properties. Um, the next one is city ponds. The next one is the utili, all the utility stations in Salina. And then the other one is the uh Parks Department, all of the medians um that are part of the mowing contract. So um there's, there's quite a bit of different areas that, that get scrutiny um from the public and from you all and, and from staff and from everyone. Uh, certainly recently, there's been a, a few areas in town that um have, has shown quite a bit of uh excess grass, I guess I would say. Um, quite a bit of grass that um ended up being cut in it, almost like in windrows, just a, a great, a great amount of material. Um, the, probably the one that, that is most prominent or that comes to mind is along Belmont. So I, I think this, and, and I, I do want to say that um Mr. Fox is here with Fox Lawn and Landscape. He is the contractor for the citywide uh mowing contract. So if you have additional questions or if he would like to speak, he's certainly uh welcome to do so. Um, but I, I would say that my observation has been that over the last several weeks, about three weeks ago, I think um we had a, a fair amount of rain. And um speaking with Dan, um, the um, you know, his, his businesses, I'm sure many businesses certainly is the, that we understand from a city's perspective uh with staffing. And so we had a uh, a mower or a couple of mowers that normally do not do city properties. They do commercial properties, mow that Belmont uh section. And the commercial properties keep their decks higher. I wasn't aware of this, but businesses just want their grass to be taller. Uh, the city likes the um, likes for him to have his decks at about three inches, uh cut it as low as we possibly can. And that is because depending on what area we're talking about. So if it's right of way, there, we contract for fifteen cuts per year. That averages in the mowing season to be about every two weeks. And it takes about two weeks to get around the city. Um, whereas the medians get twenty nine cuts per year. And uh which is pretty much weekly throughout the mowing cycle. Well, the people who were mowing the, the medians were the people who typically mow the um, his civilian contracts. And so the deck was higher. So we started out with um, we, we had the rain, we had a little bit extra grass and then we had the guy mowing it, who was mowing it at a different height. Uh, because he was a different employee, not, not normally doing this contract. So by the time it came around for its next cut, the grass was already higher. We started getting a lot more material. Um, what we've done um subsequently is we've asked Mr. Fox and his staff to go back and clean up all that excess grass and they began that process today. I am told that it's about seventy-five percent done and that they should finish up the rest of the corridor tomorrow. I, I, I do want to emphasize that um there are, for each of the different zones, the, for the right of way and the, the city ponds, that's um the streets work group. Mr. Coatch is uh part of, part of Mr. Coatch's group. Um, and Brent Buckwald, the street superintendent, is the person that manages that contract and, and Brent has told me that when he comes across an area that requires attention, that something doesn't look right or didn't get done, that he has a conversation um with Dan directly. And Dan is pretty responsive in getting someone out there to address the problem. I also asked um Mr. Hammond and I asked um Ms. Task, Mrs. Tasker, Ms. Tasker um with utilities um how they felt, how everything was going and um they communicated the exact same thing, that he is um been very responsive to them in addressing these areas. So I think with that, I would just um if there's any questions regarding mowing, we're certainly, uh we'll certainly do our best to try to answer them. And I don't know if uh Dan would, wanted to say anything, but uh Mike asked me to just give you a little bit of an update on where we are with mowing.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Did Mr. Fox want to comment or, I mean, Kansas weather, huh? And who knew mowing could be so complicated about that?
All right, Dan Fox, Fox Lawn and Landscape. Uh, we've been doing the uh city mowing uh here in town uh for the past ten years. The uh, the park stuff that's been added uh as of last year is the newest uh group to that section. Um, a lot of new, interesting, challenging areas. Um, and for the most part, we, we had a bumpy start to be honest, because when we took that stuff on, the parks was running understaffed already. And basically when COVID happened, there was a lot of stuff that was getting like the bare minimum in terms of mowing. And so the first, I would say, six months was an absolute struggle to get that stuff back under control and you know, looking right in the public eye. Um, South Ohio uh overpass has probably been like the biggest challenge out of all of those sections to overcome. Uh, not only are the hills like extremely uh steep, um there was several uh trees that had to get removed um from those banks to make things right and, and flow smoothly. Uh, the Parks Department has done a, a good job in working with us, trying to get those uh issues resolved. And for the most part, I think that we're headed in the right direction. Um, staffing has been an issue for everybody, uh just like Jim said. It's not going away anytime soon unfortunately, but we are doing our best. Um, every spring, we overhire. We have way more help than we need to try to like uh cushion the effects that happen the second it gets hot. You have people that drop off and you don't, don't expect that. Um, they just can't handle the heat. So in terms of equipment and manpower, uh we have what we need. Uh, the equipment's there, the people are there. But if you change any aspect of that, uh things can go south. And so that's essentially what happened and Jim did a pretty good job of explaining what happened on specifically Belmont. Uh, I thought, hey, we've got a lot of rain. This crew got done early, let's get them in. They go, they knock it out, things are going great. We go the next week with the normal crew that mows and of course, you know, not only are they mowing an inch shorter, but they're mowing basically three to four inches of grass off of something. And we ended up with just mountains of grass everywhere. So uh we've had more rain this year than we've ever had. Um, I wouldn't say ever had, but like how often do we have like consistent four inch rainfalls in June and July? Usually by the end of June, we're kind of wrapping up the rainfall. And this year we've just had like nice, consistent rains, which is great for the grass otherwise. Uh, but when you're mowing stuff on a two week schedule, there's just nowhere for that grass to go. And so usually by now, we've already dried out, things are flying and we're moving faster through stuff. And that just isn't the case this year. It's just been one battle after another uh with rain and the growth that we've seen. Obviously you add rain and heat, things grow. So uh I appreciate everybody's patience. Uh, we're looking to continue to work with the city uh and continue uh trying to meet and exceed those expectations. So.
Yeah, and I would add one thing. As these things have come up, we've met with Mr. Fox and part of it is contractual. We, we drafted the contract for the frequency of mowing and the, the geographic areas that we identified and then the tree thing was something that we didn't foresee coming. So eh, as we've added ground, as we've kind of had different experiences, we've talked about, okay, is this rise to the level that we need to re, rework our contract language or, or come up with different provisions? The, this rain cycle, we haven't figured out just yet. I don't know that, you know, frankly, from a cost perspective, I don't know that we want to jump too quickly to weekly mowings if we can get by with every two weeks, but we're kind of on the bleeding edge.
Well, it sounds like to me you helped us out during the COVID, but short on staff, but thank you for that. And then uh, uh, it sounds like also you've been out picking up some of that extra grass too, so.
Trying. You bet. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for being responsive and uh, you know, standing behind your work, taking care of the business. Thank you.
Yeah, the fact that you're here says a lot. Appreciate it.
You do. Um, I did have a question. I don't know if this is for staff probably. We deeded over the, the uh tennis courts over there by South High and Jerry Ivy. So is the school district then they're responsible for mowing part of that around the tennis courts, I take it?
What, we?
How did we?
Uh, number one, we don't contract that area, that, that park out for mowing. That's still city staff. And to be honest, I'd have to double check whether we've transitioned away from park staff mowing it.
You, you might check on that, because I, it did seem like one time the, the, the park seemed to be mowed better than around the, the, the tennis courts. And so I was just curious if we knew, because somebody had said something to me and I, I said, I'm not so sure that's not school district ground now that needs to be mowed. So I don't know, we might check on that, make sure.
I, I, I would just say, I don't know the answer, but I communicate on this subject with Jeff Hammond a lot. I'll talk to Jeff about it and we'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, the other benefit is we've struggled to staff, whether it was COVID or coming out of COVID. Eh, being able to contract for that, for the amount of mowing that we're adding to the contract not only addresses our staffing issue, but it lets us con, uh concentrate the staff that we do have on repairing streets and, and other maintenance items. So I think we're seeing an ancillary benefit from contracting out the mowing, but we're still kind of working through it.
Thanks to staff for that. Um, Mr. Mantle, are you wanting to address this particular issue? I think we're ready to move to public forum, so I'll just let, turn you loose there, sir.
Okay, Norman Mantle, on the grass mowing issue, I don't think we should be moving, mowing in you but all. Because that is a carbon capture issue. If you capture this carbon, which takes it and keeps it in the soil instead of being reflected going back up in the atmosphere, that is what's warming up our atmosphere. The closer you clip it, that heat reflection goes back in the atmosphere. You can actually sell this carbon issue. So I don't have any problem with not mowing at all.
Well, you would be one of the very few, because when we cut back our mowing in twenty twenty because of COVID, we are. twenty twenty because of COVID, we, our phone rang off the hook, so.
Well, all that's your job.
But you're in the minority, I can tell you right now.
Well, that's your job to get chewed out.
Well, and we did, and we did it with a smile.
But, so, no, don't, don't mow it, if the guy does the best he can, so shag luck is in.
In your book.
No, no, even out here in, between the library and the city building, the ma- maintenance man says, yeah, the shag luck is in, pretty doesn't pay the bills.
So I guess we are in citizens' forum now, is there anyone else that would like to a- address the commission under citizens' forum? Uh, we'll reset you.
On this waste issue, Norman Mantle, Salina, Kansas, until you have zero population growth, you're not gonna reduce this population and this waste issue in the landfills. As the population increases, so do your problems increase. We're bringing more stuff to the landfill? It's pretty easy to figure that out, so do you want economic development or do you want to reduce the waste?
Appreciate that thought. Thank you. Anyone else care to comment? If not, we'll uh move to uh the last item on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned.